This March 23rd, 2022 meeting of the Union Township Zoning Commission is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a very small gathering. I will note that anybody who wants to speak needs to fill out a form, but I think we're probably square on that already. All righty. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from last month's meeting?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 23rd meeting?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. Mr. Floudy, could you please call roll?
Roll call, Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we have one case tonight, 2-22-Z, a PD zone change request. Mr. Floudy, could you please provide us with a case summary?
Yes, sir. The one case tonight is the applicant is Mona and Patel. The contact person is Mr. Carl Hartman. The applicant has submitted an application requesting that two parcels be rezoned from R2 Single Family to PD Plan Development to construct a multi-tenant building with five leaseful tenant spaces in a drive-through location. The proposed zoning map amendment is located in the northwestern corner of the intersection of Paul Drive and Old State Route 74 within the Somerside Willoughby Mixed Use Corridor as identified in the Horizon 2030 Union Township Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Some brief project history, originally this subject property was zoned R2 Single Family as part of the original zoning map adopted in 1959. For much of that time, it was home to a church. In 2008, the church facility with all impervious surfaces were cleared from the site, and then the road improvements with the Old State Route 74 widening and the Paul Drive extension greatly influenced the site, giving the site road frontage to both Old State Route 74 and Paul Drive. Some land use and zoning characteristics, the surrounding land use is decently mixed in character with B1 being located directly north of the site along Old State Route 74. Timber Glen, a multi-family use is directly to the west and south of the site, which received a PD Plan Development designation back in 2020. Indirectly east of Paul Drive is a high concentration of existing R2 Single Family residential with a mix of single-family homes along with the Jamestown Crossing development. Relationship to the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, the proposal is located in the Old State Route 74 Somerside Willoughby Mixed Use Corridor. Currently, the corridor is identified as a home to a variety of commercial and varying intensity of residential uses. Redevelopment of this corridor has increased since the adoption of this plan due to the completion of the road projects, and the infrastructure has significantly been upgraded due to this road widening project. Relationship to the zoning resolution, the PD Plan Development Regulations can be found in Article 6, Section 680 through 687. The Union Township Fire Department has reviewed this application, and they have no comments regarding the applicant's proposal as submitted, and therefore recommends approval of the development and zone change, with the understanding that final development details will confirm compliance with the Fire and Life Safety Code requirements. Some staff review and analysis, the submitted application proposes the construction of a new multi-tenant building consisting of five tenant spaces with a drive-through parking and water detention area. The new structure would total 8,650 square feet, with each of the five tenant spaces being roughly 1,400 square feet, and the remaining drive-through location being 1,650 square feet located on the eastern end of the building. The provided building elevation show a one-story structure mainly comprised of brick veneer for the outer shell of the building with traditional shingling to be used for the roofing. Signage has been provided within the plan. However, the freestanding sign is not 10 feet from the right-of-way along Old State Route 74. Placement of the freestanding sign should not block the sight line for vehicle traffic of the intersection at Paul Drive. Parking has been provided in the plan with a total of 42 spaces. Clear labeling shall be provided on the plan to dictate flow through the development. The drive-through location should be marked to clearly indicate the drive-through traffic to staff around the rear of the building, while staff parking being used to dedicate towards the rear of the site is preferred as it will lessen congestion with minimizing interference of vehicles waiting through the drive-through line with the vehicles trying to reverse and exit the parking spaces. With the newly completed Old State Route 74 widening in the Paul Drive extension, the site is positioned for new development. The ingress egress onto Paul Drive will be the primary entrance, giving patrons the ability to exit the development and be positioned at the stoplight. The proposed ride-in, ride-out will ultimately have to be approved by the Claremont County Engineer. New sidewalks at the width of six feet are proposed down the eastern property line along Paul Drive. This new sidewalk will connect with the sidewalks placed along Old State Route 74, providing greater pedestrian activity. Landscaping is provided within this application. Additional landscaping shall be considered along the eastern property line. A low evergreen hedge shall be provided along parking spaces 25 through 28, and strategically implemented along the drive aisles to help shield headlights from neighboring properties, pedestrians, and roadways. Lastly, the applicant has provided some technical analysis for the proposed PD, including the lot uses calculation, which indicates the proposed open space at the site to be at 47%. Action required is in accordance with 680 through 687 of the zoning resolution. The Zoning Commission is to enter into a motion to recommend approval, approval with some modification or denial of the applicant's request to rezone the subject property from R2 Single Family Detached Residential to PD Plan Development as submitted and with further modifications as deemed appropriate. Some of the recommended modifications, one, that the applicant address the concerns of the county engineer, Claremont County Water and Sewer District, the Ohio Department of Transportation, and the Union Township Fire Department during final development approval. Two, the applicant shall file a consolidation plat for all the properties within 18 months of the date of this approval. For permitting purposes, preferred parcel ID number is to remain the PIN 413104B133 and the corresponding address to the parcel 1005 Old State Route 74 if possible. Provide details of the traffic flow through the proposed site. Requirement of limiting the stacking of the vehicles for the drive-through to the rear of the property and maintaining the rear parking spaces for the staff parking should help lessen congestion. All signage shall be limited to monument-style signage capped at a height of not more than 10 feet from the finished grade. And five additional landscaping shall be provided along the eastern property line in the form of low green evergreen hedge to buffer the parking lot and nearby residential property, subject to administrative review and approval at the time of permitting. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Floudy. Is the applicant here to speak for the case? Please step forward and tell us who you are and let us know what your plan is. Tell us about your plan.
My name is Carl Hartman. I'm engineer for the applicant. My address is 3478 Holiday Ridge Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio 45245. We have with me tonight Mona Patel, who is the applicant, who has a contract to purchase the property from the CIC, which is the establishment that currently owns the property, which was bought by the township and transferred to the CIC. We also have Larry Keith here this evening. He's the architect that came up with the building plans and the renderings and the floor plan. It's kind of, I, first I'll start off by complimenting Craig on his very first report. I think he was very thorough with your report, which I would expect from anybody else who graduated from the University of Cincinnati. Thank you, Greg, for your report. And I think we all recognize that the glenesty area of Claremont County in 1959 was a sleepy little section of Union Township. My wife and I moved into Union Township in 1961, and it was still a rural, basically, community. Much has changed. We know that with 32, with 275, all these improvements have greatly changed. And recently, the recently completed improvements of Old State Route 74 and the ongoing construction right now east of this, with the new interchange coming in up at Buxton Road. So this whole area is no longer the sleepy little glenesty area. So what we have here tonight is a plan. The Patels are also the owners and operators of the Exxon Station on the north side of Old State Route 74, that corner of Teal Town. What we have with our site plan is that we have Paul Drive now aligns with Teal Town Road. It's a signalized intersection, so that allows that traffic. We realize that there are some conditions that need to be understood and met, and we've had a preliminary meeting with the county engineer and his staff to discuss the access into the site. But it's one of those chicken and eggs things. We need our zoning first to go in and discuss in more detail this. I can only imagine that we will be required to come up with a traffic impact study that will address the need, what we can have for our access off Old 74. One of the things that you note from the traffic pattern of the site plan is that we have with our right-in and right-out off Old 74, we recognize the fact that we do not want a left turn coming out of here competing with the traffic going after the signal and everything else. That just would be not good engineering and not good traffic engineering to accomplish that. But the, what we show here, and one thing we were considering and might even consider, and we'd like to discuss with staff, is that drive that goes around the back of the building, we would probably make that one way. Make that as an exit, and that where the staff parking, employee parking in the back, make it angled parking in there so that people could back out of that and are directed to exit out onto Paul Drive. And like Craig mentioned in his report, having the employee parking at the rear minimizes potential for impact with any of the customers that use the stores up front. The drive-through is entered from the back and give them the opportunity to make a U-turn and exit at the Paul Road. The architecture is very good. You know, he's got an eight-foot walk on the front of it, so it's the actual front doors of this. And I believe the initial tenant was going to be the taco place. Have any of you have eaten the tacos over there at Diego's Tacos? Excellent. And Diego is going to occupy one of the cells of the building that we have here.
Two units.
How many?
Two units.
Two units? Well, he's, he's already got two units, and their success has been very good, and their reputation extends well beyond Union Township as far as going. And I know our sons go over there and pride themselves, "I come home with Diego tacos" in that regard, in that regard. So basically, you know, we find all the conditions that the recommended modifications to be acceptable, where there is no conflict on our part. Like I said, we are in discussions with the county engineer's office. There's sewer and water available at the site. We've been knowledge this with the sewer and water department, water resources department of the county. Basically, I think that I have explained the main concern is the traffic, and I think we've handled this. We actually have, I think, a few more parking spaces than what the code requires. We do have several handicap spaces out front to accommodate that. The sidewalk in front of those handicap spaces will be depressed to allow for wheelchair and that. And the eight-foot covering on the front, the recess of that will allow for good people to get in, out of the rain, as we, you know, as I tried to do today, but it was not successful. So I would gladly answer any questions. Mona can answer any questions as far as her is concerned, and Larry here can answer any questions as it relates to the architecture. Mona?
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I'm a little short. Address is 459...
Your home address.
1261 Bluegrass Boulevard, Batavia, Ohio 45103.
All right, thank you.
Do you support everything we said, do you?
Yes, sir, I do support whatever Mr. Hartman explained.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Like I said, any questions of the three of us, we will gladly address these, and if we, I expect that we will have an answer, anything you may ask.
All right, I've got a couple, but I want to check with the other board members. Anybody have a question they'd like to address first?
I have none.
By all means, Mr. Lewis.
The, I would like everybody to take a look at the alignment. The alignment of the streets of Paul Drive and Teal Town that are on the blueprints is the old alignment, but the new alignment, I believe, is important. It better, actually, without the new alignment, I don't think this plan would be possible. But with the new alignment, it clears up. It allows the right-in and right-out to be back a good ways from the intersection, so I think that helps. But I would like to bring up, Mr. Floudy, could you bring up a picture of the overall site plan? I'm curious how the flow is going to work.
How the what?
The car flow, the traffic flow inside the site? So will they be, if someone's coming to the, going through the drive-through, they have the option of coming in from Paul Drive or from 74?
Correct.
So the travel inside the site will be one direction?
Well, what I'm indicating is that when we come in here, we will make this one way coming this way.
All right.
And make these diagonal parking, in essence, directing the people to exit this way.
Okay.
So we reduce the amount of cars exiting out on Old 74.
All right.
So the traffic flow would be like this.
So somebody that wants to go to do the drive-through can come in this way or through here?
Yes.
And then what happens when they exit the drive-through?
There'll be, there's room to make the turn and come out.
There is room for a U-turn to go backwards.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but they could also option to come out and go right onto 74.
Correct. So they have that option.
All right, so that is, there is enough room for that, for a U-turn.
Yes.
Other than that, traffic will be, so they, there will be traffic flow coming, possibly coming this way.
Correct, definitely.
So between these two spots, you've got enough room for two directional traffic?
Yes, we've got 25 feet between that. 25 feet is the width of a public road. And so we will have sufficient width there for people backing out and making that maneuver.
Are, is there any plan to angle these?
No.
All right.
No, I don't say need for, because you might have the option if some people want to do that. But primarily, I think that this would be the preferred way to get out as a traffic eyes, signalized intersection. The county GIS was not current enough to reflect the current building of Old 74. So that's why it doesn't, but you know, the right-of-way for Old Teal Town Road is still the same. They only acquired additional right-of-way on the east side of Teal Town Road. So the right-of-way through here is not quite a football field, but approaching that, but the width of the pavement is there to do that.
When somebody comes in here that doesn't want to go through the drive-through, do they have room to get around and go?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, 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 we got that.
Because it seems like a little bit of a tight spot right there.
Well, no, because this is only the concrete pad.
That's the concrete pad.
In front of the dumpster unit. You want to put a concrete pad in front of your dumpster unit because of the tires, additional load on those tires. If it was all blacktop, they would just let the blacktop, that extra weight.
So traffic may be clipping that concrete pad, is that guess?
Oh, yeah, definitely. Definitely expect that. And on the dumpster, the dumpster will be enclosed with similar materials as the building, and so that will handle that. It would be aesthetically pleasing. There would be gates on the front of the dumpster.
All right. And then store water detention back in the...
Yes, no water detention here. There is a touch basin underground approximately in this area here that goes into a larger detention basin over here that's associated with the apartments.
Okay. All right, thank you. Those are the only questions I had. Does anybody else have any questions?
It seems like a well-potted plan.
Yeah, I was just a little concerned about the flow, yes.
I thought I heard a compliment. Well planned. Well, we, you know, this is not my first rodeo, and I kind of pride ourselves on being able to anticipate. We also have a lot of meetings with the township staff before we submit our plans. I'll bring in a very rough drawn drawing to try to realize, get their input into what the final plan is, and to really get their support early, and so that we don't get into these meetings into a contentious situation.
Okay.
And that's just the way that I have learned to operate over the last 50 years.
Well, we appreciate it. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't think we have anyone else to speak for the case, and it doesn't appear that we have anyone else to speak, anyone to speak against the case. So at this time, we will close the meeting to private discussion amongst the board members, and everyone that's here is welcome to listen. And we may possibly ask you questions if something pops up during our discussion. All right, does anyone have any questions or concerns about the site?
I don't.
The plan, the site plan?
I like seeing the low level against the road like that, instead of somebody coming in and putting one of these big boxes right against the road, so.
I do, too. And we're going to have some screening, I believe, towards the eastern side?
Correct.
And we'll have that in the...
All of the recommendations of staff are acceptable.
All right. All right, then I would, if the members are agreeable, I could formulate a motion that would recommend approval, including the five recommendations from, that were included in our staff report, and also a note on the corridor and the aspects of the corridor that make sense for this site plan. All right, I'm ready to make a motion. I am going to actually recite the, since we've only have five conditions modifications, I'm going to go ahead and include those in the motion rather than reference them from the, from the staff report. All right, regarding case 2-22-Z, applicant Mona and Kuta Patel. The Zoning Commission finds that the submitted PD application and zone change request is consistent with the Horizon 2030 Land Use Plan, but does not meet all of the Plan Development Application requirements of a PD District Plan. Therefore, this commission recommends the submitted plan be approved contingent upon adherence to the noted modifications as specified in this motion. All required supplemental information and plan modifications must be completed and submitted to the Planning Director no later than one week prior to the trustees' hearing of this case. We have one finding of fact that references the focus area, the corridor this is in. The subject property is located within the Somerville, Somerside Willoughby Mixed Use Corridor, which is a very diverse area that includes a variety of commercial and residential uses. Redevelopment of this area has increased in recent years due to completion of road projects. Infrastructure capacity at the proposed site has been significantly upgraded due to the Old State Route 74 widening project. The 2030 Plan calls for consolidation of parcels into unified plans, mixed-use development of appropriate intensity, and the use of PD District to achieve these and other objectives of the corridor. The five modifications and requirements that are attached to this motion are as follows. One, that the applicant address the concerns of the county engineer, Claremont County Water and Sewer District, the Ohio Department of Transportation is applicable, and the Union Township Fire Department during final developmental approval. Second, the applicant shall file a consolidation plat for all properties within 18 months of the date of this approval. For permitting purposes, the preferred parcel ID number to retain is PIN number 413104B133, and the corresponding address to that parcel is 1005 Old State Route 74 if possible. Number three, provide details of the traffic flow through the proposed site. Requirement of limiting the stacking of vehicles for the drive-through line to the rear of the property and maintaining the rear parking spaces for staff parking shall help lessen congestion. Four, all signage shall be limited to monument-style signage capped at a height of not more than 10 feet from finished grade. All signage shall be placed to ensure that there are no sightline issues with the newly configured intersection. And fifth and final, additional landscaping shall be provided along the eastern property line in the form of a low evergreen ledge, hedge, to buffer the parking lot to nearby residential property, subject to administrative review and approval at the time of permitting. And that completes my motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have gotten a second, and we have now the opportunity to review the proposed motion, and if anyone has any concerns, we'll move forward. If not, we can make any changes at this point.
No concerns.
No concerns.
All right. Mr. Floudy, would you please call roll?
Roll call, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Shannon. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Now it's a point in time, we don't have any more cases, but we do have the chance to discuss any new business. Does anyone have any new business? I do. So what I'd like to suggest is a couple things, and this would be certainly dependent on the approval of the township trustees, would be that we consider a cycling or a rotation on the chairmanship and vice-chairmanship as we cycle through the group. So person that's chair finishes their term, they move out, the vice-chair then moves into the chair position, and one of the other members then takes the vice-chair. The vice-chair then watches for a year, then they become chair, and then so we have a rotation. Now, we would not... Now, we would not ask anyone to do this that is not comfortable with doing it, but we'd like to consider that as a procedure that we could invoke possibly next year. Daniel possibly moving into the, into the chair role, I would move out, some would then would take the vice chair position, and then we would continue that loop. I'm coming into the, I'm in my, what may be my last run on the, as a zoning commissioner, it would be 25 years at the end of my current five-year term, and I'd like to see a little bit more involvement in chair position and running the meetings as I fade out into nothing this year and a few years possibly. The other thing I would like to consider is us getting together as a group and attending a workshop, a motion crafting workshop. And the motion crafting workshop would include certainly input from the trustees as to what they'd like to see in a motion that possibly we're not including at this time. Are we putting things into motions that shouldn't be, or should we be getting additional things into motion? And then just how to craft a motion, and what kind of boilerplate should we use to make sure that everything is in the motions that we should have on a regular, consistent basis? And as Daniel mentioned earlier, possibly coming up with a preface to, a consistent common preference that we, preference that we sent out to the audience to inform them of the procedures, that summarizes the procedures of what the meeting is going to entail when it's a bit more involved than what it is tonight. So, Mr. Floudy, we would ask that you discuss this with the trustees.
Yes, sir.
Both the feasibility of cycling, their acceptance to cycling the chair and vice chair positions, as well as holding a workshop, and who would, when the workshop? It could be a, just someone from our organization. We certainly don't need to go outside our organization. Maybe the trustees or one or two of the trustees could attend, certainly you would be in attendance, we would all be in attendance, and we can discuss past motions and how we should, you know, move with motions going forward. And I think it'd be a good learning experience for everyone.
Yes, sir.
Because we always need to update our, and our plan, the zoning document, has changed a little bit over time, and the 2030 plan is possibly coming up for another review before too long. So I think all that's, things would be a good time for us to catch up.
Yes, yep, I will definitely pass that message.
Great, thank you very much. Alright, any old business? Anybody have anything old they want to bring up? No? Alright, I will call this meeting adjourned at 7:28, 7:29 PM.